I was locked down in the office when I wasn't paying attention.
Good evening. Hi, it's Tuesday, May 5th. I'm calling the meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. A meeting of the Cohasset Board of Selectmen. We're in the Selectmen's Office, Cohasset Town Hall. Our first order of business is the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve's with us this evening, and I don't know if anybody is here from the public. Chief?
A very quick question for the board.
Come on up.
I haven't even had a chance to address this with Chris.
Uh-oh.
No, just a policy thought process. We have, obviously, on Forest Avenue, we have redundant hydrants on Forest Avenue because we have Aquarian Water on one side of the street, the Cohasset Water on the other side of the street. Both of them provide hydrants to Forest Ave. We have at least one that is on the Aquarian system that is completely out of service. It leaked over the winter. It froze. It cracked the barrel of the hydrant. And my recommendation is going to be that we just cap it. We were moving and cap it. We have one that's within 200 feet in one direction and 300 feet in the other direction, and that is more than enough coverage for the whole neighborhood.
Can we just go ahead and do that, or we would ask it?
Well, I just want, this is more than anything else, and I don't need a formal vote. I just wanted to, you know, get some input from the board. You know, as I said, my recommendation is that we'll just move down that road, that we'll just eliminate that one hydrant.
Who owns the physical hydrant?
Technically, we do. Aquarian Water has informed us that we own the hydrants. So if we want to replace it, we can. We do it. I think it's just, it may be a waste of money. The hydrants, the hydrants that are on the Aquarian line on Forest Ave. Are on a six-inch water main that is dead-ended at Old Coach and Surrey Road. Comes up from the bottom of the street where we, ten-plus years ago, we spent all the money to bring the Cohasset water line down Forest Ave, so we have a looped system. A much bigger main, provides more water. I think that it's, it's a situation that we, you know, to spend four or five thousand dollars to replace a hydrant may not be worth the effort.
What size inch pipe would we have?
It's at least eight.
I know. You want me to tell you, sir? Well, in a little tear, my father, who was, was a manager in the Leamont Concrete Pipe, after six months, he said, "It's a funny thing. We got an order for eight-inch pipe." But when the specs came in, they wanted six. Who got the money? He asked me. I assumed no one did.
So.
Another one of the mysteries.
This is way back in nineteen sixty-two. Sixty-two.
So I have a question. So that means that the money that the town pays Aquarian for the fire hydrant fee does not include replacing them only?
It does not include maintenance. It does not include replacement. It is strictly, as they talked about on Saturday, when, when it is them producing the water, keeping it in the pipes, and having the storage capacity to provide water. That's what they give us for the rate that they charge us.
So the, the rate that came, I don't have it with me this evening, but the rate, when, when we asked, would it encourage them to break it out, the fire suppression fee for the town of Cohasset? It was seventy, seventy, in the range of seventy thousand for that portion of it. And the rest of the money that the town is paying is for the debt.
Mm-hmm.
So it might be worth renegotiating.
With Aquarian?
With Aquarian.
Aquarian isn't the, I mean, without going to, we've got to have a more elaborate discussion about this in the future. The Aquarian acquisition matter is heading for final motions and briefings and papers. The last indication I was given by Hingham is that they expect a decision in June or July. And at that point, Hingham has to make a decision about whether to go forward and how to go forward. So I, I have, I have had a preliminary, well, I have periodic conversations with the town administrator. I do think we have to, you know, and, and the expectation on their side is that it would take at least a year of transition. So, but I, I think it's time to, to start having further conversations.
I'm just saying that if that is what came out of our rate study, that perhaps a similar study to justify what the taxpayers or Cohasset are paying, Hingham or Aquarian.
We have questioned them at length, not to get into this into, but we have questioned them at length in regards to what exactly they're paying for. And their response back was, "You're paying for the standby water. You're paying for the pipes that are in the ground. You're paying for the water in the tank. You're paying for the production. You're paying for all of that." If you want us to maintain, and I was talking about exercising the valves, flushing the hydrants, doing all the things that Cohasset Water does.
They did.
They said, "Well, we'll do that for you, but we're going to charge you more for that." So that's as far as that ever went.
Is this Aquarian or Hingham?
Aquarian.
Now, is Hingham, you didn't say in what you.
They're in the process.
Are they going to acquire it?
They're in the process. They're, they're litigating over the potential valuation of the system.
Okay.
And again, the expectation I've been given is that as the final rounds of papers and all things are served, the trial's complete at this point, as I understand it.
Oh, they have a tri, it's a trial?
Well, not in front of a jury. It's in front of a judge. And, and the, the matter is expected to reach resolution in June, late June, or sometime in July. That's what I've been told. The valuation of the system.
And then Hingham will decide if they want to acquire it? Okay. All right. Thank you.
And again, as I, we'll keep, we'll almost really keep everybody up to date.
Certainly, there's people in town that have asked us, you know, a lot of people, they know where they pay their, their water bills to, but they don't understand our role in or out of that process, so they're curious. So we should.
Apparently, I, I mean, I just left us the other day, and I don't know all the details. I guess that one, that service went in about a hundred years ago, about eighty, eighty, ninety years ago. And, you know, again, there was, there were other things, there were some bigger hotels, I guess, other reasons for what they did. And Hull was, you know, it's all part of one system, so this, it's, it's something we've been talking about quietly, but I think as we get closer to it, Hingham gets closer to a decision, we'll know better with the next steps.
And is, is it premature to even speculate as to, depending on the outcome in Hingham, what would happen to Cohasset's other people?
Well, I mean, if, if Hingham acquires, they'll acquire, they have to acquire everything.
Right.
And could Cohasset enter a conversation of acquisition? Yes. Yes, it could. But there are stretches, though, that are, are just like with the sewer system, that are probably cost prohibitive, people, particularly along, along Hull Street, simply because that runs around the hull.
We're not expecting.
Well, yeah, to wa, to, to lay another set of pipes there might be problematic, so. Just because of the way the system was designed.
Something that concerns me is this is a result of it not being maintained and taken care of.
Yeah.
That's right.
And you can just drive up in that area, you can see unpainted, obviously, untaken care of water hydrants. So what I'm concerned about is the other hydrants and needing, the need for us or somebody to get in there and start doing some maintenance, because this is pretty obvious that something like this would happen. I'm sure the people off Forest Ave know and are saying, "I'm not surprised by this." So, and I know it's not technically our responsibility, but something, we need to, something needs to be done here, because you've obviously got a situation where one party's saying, "I'm not going to do it."
I, I think once it's clarity, once it's clarity on the path of ownership, I think it'll be a lot easier to develop a plan, because at this point, Aquarian's not, you know, going to do anything there until there's some determination to whether or not they're going to maintain the system.
What you don't want to have is one with one hydrant down, and now we're a little less of all quite acceptable, then you go to open that up in the middle of a fire, and I don't think the chief's going to want to see you can't open it up or it doesn't work.
The, the town of Hull isn't exactly the same, is having the same problem right now.
Exactly the same problem, that there's been no maintenance done. And in fact, I watched some of the Hull Town meeting last night, and that was one of the questions that was raised in regards to, you know, where they stood, and the fire chief told them, "Boy, Black, listen, I don't know. When we open them and they don't work, we find out, we find out they're broken." So, and then you move on. So it's a, it's, you know, we are, we are very lucky that Cohasset Water is in a very good position in regards to maintenance, flushing, and everything else that they do. We have a great deal of confidence in the equipment and how they take it.
Is there any way without undue expense or whatever to check to make sure that what we've got there is working? Because again, if there's a fire, that isn't the time we want to find out, or is that something technologically that's not?
Well, they flush, they flush the water spring, and they turn on power, they lease the hot, across the street from me, so I know that works.
The, as far as Cohasset Water goes, in fact, the flushing program starts tomorrow. I just got a program call, so Coha, so they start their flushing program. Part of the problem is that with Aquarian, they're already on their, their summer ban, water ban, because they can only draw so much water. So if we start opening hydrants and flushing things without a scheduled program, to use the example of Cohasset, when they first started the flushing program, the color of the water that was coming out of the lines was not very attractive. So if we go down to the fire end of Jerusalem Road, we just start opening hydrants or cracking hydrants, we're going to stir up everything that's in the pipes, and you're going to have nothing but dirty water complaints from everybody in that entire end of town for as long as we're down there doing it. So it's something that is, Chris said, I think we have to investigate with whomever once this comes to an end.
All righty.
I didn't mean to, to drag this on, but that was, I just wanted to give you the heads up, because we will start doing the investigation in regards to exactly what our options are down there. And if neighbors start seeing hydrants disappearing, I want them to be fully aware that, that their safety, their safety is not in any way in jeopardy.
They don't trust that. Thank you very much.
No issues.
All righty.
Thank you.
Selectmen update. Kevin?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Karen?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Martha?
I have nothing.
You have nothing?
I just want to mention that this coming, no, but this weekend's the ninth and the tenth. The following weekend is the healing fields, and I know that they're looking for volunteers to help put all of the flags. So if anybody has time and willingness to, to help with that, get in touch with the Legion, or you could certainly call this office, and they can get you in touch with the right people. So town manager report, and then do you want to kind of segue into a town meeting, a debrief?
Sure. Well, I mean, that's what I'll, actually, that's really what I want to talk about. I just want to thank everybody who came. I want to thank everybody who worked on it. I, I think it was a very successful meeting. I think there was a tremendous amount of work by so many people that went into it. And again, I, it's what makes this town work, and it's, and I'm, I'm grateful for it, and I think the town is well-served by it. So it was a successful meeting. Of course, it's not, it's never an ending, right? It's always a beginning. Town meeting is, 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 town meeting is a weight post, an important one. So the, you know, the ongoing, the conversations continue. So the, so up on the web now is, is election information, the specimen ballot. It's already been up there, but we've moved it to the front of the first page. It should be up there now. The minute should be up momentarily, by the end of the week, so people can see the minutes of the meeting. That, that should be up by the end of the week. And we'll continue to do more updates on some of the articles and the article presentations, you know, as we start to implement some things. And again, obviously, as we move forward on things like the solar field, we'll most certainly be updating people. As that goes forward, some of the spending, particularly the short-term stuff, we'll most certainly, we'll, we'll, we'll go about, you know, the roadwork we're trying to do in the short term. And again, the work on the senior center, obviously, most certainly will be public. Do you want to go over, I mean, I, there's.
I do think on the senior center, if that, you know, there is any desire and a need to move, to get moving on that as quickly as we, as easily can, as soon as, as soon as you've rested a half a day. But I, I do think it's pretty obvious that needs to be done for, for a variety of reasons. I won't go into, I know you're aware of them, but I would urge that we, and I'm sure everybody agrees, we, we move on that expeditiously.
I expect it will, I was actually in meetings on something else today, but I expect it will be meeting as soon as next week to, to sit down and hammer out, we hammer out some, some direction.
You'll be meeting with whom?
I'm going to reach out to the Social Service League and see if you can set up.
Without the direction from the board?
To set up some kind of schedule. I mean.
We, we have a, we have an executive session tonight.
Oh, okay.
And part of that executive session is to discuss, consider the purchase lease exchange of value of real property, and it's noted that we will discuss 91 Sawyer Street.
Yeah, why you.
I, I am not going to be negotiating.
You will get direction.
A period or a comma without having talked to the board first. But, but we do have to start setting it, as we approach, as we approach June, I think we need to set.
I have a benchmark.
Yeah, it's like, it's like with, with contract negotiations. The first step is to set aside some times and dates, so that we know that we can make ourselves available to have conversations. And I think we need to do that, so.
I think it also became clear in those last few meetings that at least the chairs of both advisory and capital budget should be either included or briefed on the situation.
Discuss that in closed session. Discuss that in executive session.
Well, we can.
Yes, we'll, we'll get, we'll drill down a little bit more on kind of the path for this, an executive session.
Could, could I just make a comment? On the, on the town meeting, I, I would like to ask the board, and we're not all, all here this evening, but I, I think it would be who us to determine dates, not open the warrant or do anything like that, but determine dates both for the fall special and also for next year's spring, so that if the board decides that it does want to, there was some discussion about athletic events on the day of town meeting and so forth. They would have that then also, so that it's on record, so we don't have events happening on those days.
Yeah, I actually pulled out that schedule. I think I left it at home. But that is something that I think we could talk about within the next couple of weeks to set, I mean, again, set a schedule. We did it last year early, but it wasn't as early as now. And now we can set it, you know, budget message for the Selectmen, you know, town, you know, and we're going to, and we're anticipating a special town meeting, we'll put a special town meeting date on there and just go through to annual town meeting. And I have actually had a couple of, you know, people commenting about, "I don't like Saturdays. I do like Saturdays. I don't like Saturdays. Why isn't it on a weeknight?" So when we set that schedule, we can have that discussion openly and have people weigh in on it.
Easter is early next year, for whatever that's worth, so, but a Patriots Day never changes, so.
Never changes.
I mean, there are communities that, I mean, this is the busiest time in Massachusetts, because it's tight for town meetings. It's the end of April, the beginning of May. Hull, as you know, began last night. Hingham was a week ago tonight, last night. So, and Situate was actually early this year. Situate was.
Winchester was last week and this week.
Yeah, so.
All at night.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but at this point, I, I'd, again, you know, you, the board made a commitment and went ahead and did a Saturday meeting. So, you know, I, I think you should, I think you have plenty of time, but I think if you want to set up a schedule, you, you know, you can do it by June. Give everybody a good solid.
Especially for the town meeting, the special town meeting dates, it's really important. And it'll help, you know, just, it'll help some of the committees know, like CPCs on the committees, that, you know, I would love for all of that to have conversed and vetted out well before, you know, we're really into the weeds of, of the budget in, like, December and January.
It would be nice to encourage people to start thinking about things prior to February or March.
Yep.
Again, I, I, I'm going to start with this fiscal forecasting, some of those discussions early in the fall. These public discussions about budget and budget priorities. And I really, you know, at the school, I, I need to encourage them to take a lead on a session or two. I think we need to talk about enrollment and things of that sort, and population projections. Those are really important. And I think we, I'll, I'll reach out to the superintendent about that.
Yeah, and last year, we started, the board started their goals and objectives in early June, and I anticipate we'll do the same thing. And one of the, another thing that people have been talking about is kind of the, the master plan or a master plan or some, you know, sub of a master plan, or take the master plan, or whatever. I think we have to have that conversation, because for the schools, too, if, if there are going to be future building needs five, 10 years out, you know, we, we really need to take some time and queue up those conversations.
We've had, we've had master plans in the past. There's one in nineteen sixty, which projects a town of twenty-two thousand with different schools and everything. And then I believe there was another one later. I, I, I moved to Cohasset in sixty-one, and was presented with this plan, which the only thing that really was done was in 3A getting, you know, developing 3A a little bit for business. But it's very interesting, and I think the library might have, I have parts of it, and I have a sub.
I'm right up there.
I think you've got the summary, but I don't, the parts.
There was one done, I, I don't have it.
In between.
Early 2000s.
Yeah, there was, there was one done within the last 10 years.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, it's just, it's just, again, part of the larger conversation, that we need to do the, the five to 10-year.
Well, if, if, if that's, if, if the board wants to do, and again, by the way, I've had some.
I think the planning board wants to do it.
I've had some side conversations with members of planning and CBA, and I think there's an interest in teeing up a bigger conversation about, about planning and development. And if that's the case, that's something that does have to start fairly early, because that's a, you know, a fairly involved process. It's a fair amount of public comment and public input. And again, the MAPC has, has offered us assistance. They, they'll do as much on the South Shore as they like to do. So if that's something, you know, if, if something the town wants to do, we most certainly want to reach out to them and have them at least in assist, assist any kind of work. They did work in situ on a development study, which was very, I think, very valuable to Situate. And I think we could talk to them about, about what kind of resource they might have available to us. But again, I would agree. That would be something that you'd want to have a conversation about sooner rather than later, because, you know, even if you don't do a lot of work in the summer, falls upon you, and then boom, you know, you're running.
Yeah. You know, we've, you know, maybe we haven't met as, as frequently in the summer, but I, I don't, I don't think we ever take, think of summer as, as a break. I hate to tell you.
Well, I don't mean with this, but a lot of the boards and committees slow down.
Yes, yep.
And people take, you know, you know, any of those summers are something that can be cherished and enjoyed.
Especially in this town, yeah.
Yeah, and, but that said, as long as you give people enough advance notice, people can adjust their schedules and plan and set aside time.
Well, but certainly, that's a good time for us to, to really get focused on our goals and objectives, so that when the committees really start repopulating, re-engaging in the fall, they've got, they've got a, you know, a guidepost.
So, so that's also something that would be teed up early, too. So we have a calendar. Planning calendar.
Anything else on the board on town meeting, other than thank you? You've thanked us. It's, it's thank you.
I'd like to thank Tracy and Jen.
And.
Yeah.
The staff and everybody of the.
And all the committees and boards that vetted and generated some of that material. They worked for weeks and weeks on it, so thank them, too.
Oh, you know, again, it's a, it's a team, you know, I, I know it's sometimes seems trite to say this, but government is a team sport. It just is. And, and it's not a team sport with, you know, with I win, you lose. It's, it's a collaborative victory all the time, right? That's what it is.
Thank you for distinguishing.
Yeah, I mean, it's not, so, it, it, and, and it worked, it's been working well, because people have given the time in advance to vet the questions. And, you know, again, Tracy and Jen do a tremendous, I mean, this day-to-day stuff that we do here every day matters in that. But, you know, government, government doesn't stop. I wish we, you know, there were times when I think we'd like to close the door and take a little time, but it doesn't work like that. I mean, we're in, we're in the service provision business 365 days a year. And as I know, the police and fire, obviously, know that all the time. But, you know, we're always, you know, we're always looking out in the out years. We're looking at where we are. We're looking backwards to get direction as to where things have succeeded and not. I mean, there was, we had a big meeting in here today, and I, and I don't want to, I don't have, roll that deadline yet, but we've been talking about see, click, fix, where we had a very big, there was, there's a lot of work now going on to roll out this citizen contact portal, so that people can, you know, email or, or send in on their app potholes or streetlights or all of that. And so, so that work is ongoing, too. So there's, over the next, you know, now the town meeting is, is, is over. There's a little more time now to devote to some of those things. I just need to get the bow on them and say, "Okay, here we are." Boom. Visual budget is up on the web, and I hope people go and take a look at it. You know, it's a really valuable tool.
I hope you put the sidewalk that I've been asking for 12 years from the top of Pleasant Street to the Deer Hill Park. It's only about, well, it may be around here, that, and because then people, mothers wouldn't have to have their carriages out on the road.
Have we, have we ever had looked at all these sidewalks of walking in the town?
No, they haven't. Yes, yes, we have.
Has that ever been part of any kind of, is there any, is that a fruitful conversation in fall?
We had a sidewalk committee. Actually, I, I proposed it, and we had it years ago when I was on the board. Peter Purse was chair, and that's where, when you had, Forest Avenue was done. It was done in sections while we had a little money, because, so you've got me to thank for that.
Thank you, Martha.
Yeah, but we need one on, on Jerusalem Road, really.
It sounds like what we ought to do is not near future necessarily, but some kind of a master plan for how we can enhance ourselves to being a walking community and more a family community.
See, that would be part of a master plan.
Yeah, but that'd be something that MAPC could do, too.
They could offer assistance in that.
Well, even the.
Cohasset is problematic in some areas because of its, just the topography and all the ledge, and they ran into a lot of problems on Forest Ave.
Well, that's why it was done in, in sections, because there was, you know, they had to go to one side and then the other.
The streets are all different sizes, so it's not necessarily always 10 feet as into your property as town property. So it's a very complicated issue, and I think that, I think, you know, as, as, you know, the, the capital budget says, you know, we got, what, you know, four million dollars of projects and a million dollars to spend. So we really do have to do some prioritizing as to what really needs to be done.
Well, I know one of the things, Chris, you're, you look like you want to say something, too, so at least, sorry to interrupt. But just, you know, we did, early in the year, talk about getting a, a kind of a road, and, you know, it's going to help us address some of the islands and some of the public space. And I think it's, once we see, have a better visual on what's town land, where things are at, you know, that's something we can roll into that, that planning conversation. I know it was probably addressed in the last master plan from the early 2000s, so it might be a workshop to, yeah.
I mean, what a master, what a master planning process does is assess where you are and make priorities for the future. And they can be as broad or specific as you'd like them to be. When I was in my prior community, we did a, a visioning, community visioning across one of the peninsulas in town, at the Polwaishe, the peninsula, and incorporated multiple levels of government. We actually fortunately have one, so it's a little easier to bring them into the table. And, and the question was, what are the community priorities? You know, open space and economic development and, you know, things. Traffic was always a big issue, and parking.
Right.
And, and those were all part of an ongoing conversation. And, you know, that's, that's really, I mean, a master plan is as much a conversation as anything else. And it helps to clarify where you want to go. And again, I, I, we've been talking about this privately with a whole lot of people. We're, we're five years out of the class's 250th anniversary, class of 2020. I mean, in, in some ways, that's what we're talking about, right? Planning for the future and, and looking ahead. So it's a perfect time in many ways to start doing it.
Yeah, it's also a great reason why, yeah, it's a great reason why, and we started work on it, too, is it's great. Your thought of having a town mission, vision statement, you know? That's the kind of thing that helps enhance that conversation.
I wonder if during the summer, we could consider doing some, having some internal, no consultants at this point, but we just got a parking study, and what typically happens is you have a problem, you, you, you look for some immediate solutions, you bring a consultant in, they do a study, and then we get all excited about talking about sidewalks. So, you know, we, we need to make sure we stay kind of on task, but maybe this summer, like we do in the fall, we do some workshops where we just have these conversations, community visioning conversations. We got to find out about the, is it a priority to have sidewalks up on the hillside or, you know, down Sawyer Street on the other side, whatever.
You know, on the sidewalk conversation, without going too much further on this, there's been a lot of talk for a while about connecting the train station to the downtown by sidewalk. And unfortunately, Main Street is problematic because of its topography and the, the, the wetlands and the, and the rock. But there's also, you know, but it's, it's a priority to be able to do that. And also, we have Avalon right there. We have kids that go to school.
Avalon, all like that.
Exactly. So, so we, we've had conversations with the state about that.
Does any of that money still be in the.
There is, there is still some money that's available for a variety of programs. But even more importantly, the state is, is, you know, the 3A project is in the state's hopper.
But Avalon agreed to put sidewalks from Sawyer Street to Lower King.
Yeah.
It's a, I, I.
I don't know what happened because I wasn't here.
There are some resources available, but there's most certainly not enough money to be able to do everything by, with the town by itself. It's just not, it's just not there.
Yeah, my understanding was it was money. It was like 300,000 dollars. Yeah, my understanding was it was money, it was like three hundred thousand dollars.
And, and it's also, you know, but, you know, we've been working on this now for a year, um, with the state, and, and, and it's probably time for an update as to where the three A work is.
Some of that money was taken for some of the security kiosks at the, at the schools.
But there is still, there is still money there.
But there were, there were, there were two pots, I'm.
There's a very small amount of money from the Cook Estates as well.
Yeah, that, that, that was totally different, but, but there were, according to the CBA permit, there were, I think, two pots of money from Avalon, and then there were the sidewalks.
I'm only aware of one that currently exists for anything.
Okay.
Um. In the T plans, there were sidewalks both on three A and down on North Main, and the North Main was going to connect with, uh, Forest Avenue. And, uh, the T had agreed to do three A, but I was not on the, I was off the board then, when all this stuff was, and I don't know what happened, because I didn't keep them.
Let's, let's put that on a future agenda, as I was, just to get some of the answers and then figure out if.
Yeah, yeah.
Put that on, yeah.
No, it's worth the conversation. And also with the parking, I mean, the parking study is either complete or about to be complete.
Right.
You know, the que- you know, it's, it's, the, the question is, okay, what of it are we gonna make use of, and, and what recommendations make sense and what don't make sense?
Well, maybe that's a good place to kind of start this conversation, you know, if we're gonna be rejiggering anything in the village, then that opens up.
Yeah. And this conversation, remember, the National Grid has to do some work on some very old gas mains then, whether we want it to or not.
Access. Right, right.
So, it's, that, that whole conversation is, is, is something, and also National Grid has been talking about doing work on King Street, so, uh, you know, there, there's, there's, those are natural times to work within the, on the west side.
Which King Street? The west.
From, uh, from three A up.
Up to where?
Up by the water plant, right.
Yeah, yeah, because there is no, there isn't a gas main there, and there are folks who are interested in gas, so.
Are you gonna put in the RFP that they resurface totally below?
Well, they haven't, haven't done, they haven't agreed, it's, it's, it's part of a conversation, but yes, we have to work with them.
That might, that might queue up with if the sewer commission is ready with its presentation, because there are people on King Street in that area who would like to have sewer to.
By the way, by, by saying this, I am in no way suggesting this is imminent, because it is not imminent, okay?
Opening up the roads. Okay.
We're talking twelve months at least.
These are long-term conversations.
At least twelve months away, it's just conversations that have to start taking place.
And one thing leads to the other, to the other.
Correct, but the downtown parking and the downtown work on the gas mains is something that is, you know, s- six, within six months, I think. So, it's a conversation that has to take place.
Certainly affects the plan, the town's plan for repaving.
Oh, yeah.
So, do we?
So, we've taken King Street off the short-term totally paved plan, and we're gonna do some work on it, but.
So, would it behoove the town to set a road paving plan and set, give it to the utilities and say?
We do.
Hey, guys.
We, we, we do, I mean, and again, now, by the way, now that we have a clearer organizational structure. It makes it very easy to collaborate, um, and, but, except, in fact, you know, Brian and I and Mark met yesterday. Carl's on a very well-deserved vacation, um, so Brian, Mark and I met yesterday, we spent an hour talking about just logistics. And that's, and, and, you know, this helps clarify a lot of that, and I actually spent some time with, uh, another staff member today talking about the procurement aspect of this. So, you know, believe in, the, the conversations, you know, don't end.
Right.
And now, now it's time to jump up and get the stuff done, so, um, so.
Yep. Well, the good news is, we actually turned that corner, so there's all the roads are right in front of us.
I think it's in.
Yep, yep, absolutely, it's, it's all good.
I think, as you were saying earlier, I, I think it's important not only to keep the board informed, but also the public.
Yes.
So that they know, I mean, there's an awful lot that goes on here on a day-to-day basis, um, people don't know that.
I hope they do, but.
Uh, by the way, I, I, I talked to, I, no, no, I talked to Mary Ford about doing, about the column, eh, which I'm, I'm looking to start doing in the Mariner.
I know what you're saying.
No, they don't.
I want to start putting up more regular things on the webpage, and even though I'm not a Facebook person, um, I, 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 I do understand the importance of social media. And I think, uh, we started to talk about that internally, and so, putting up more things on, the town has multiple Facebook pages, uh, for, so, but, but encouraging, you know, that kind of continued communication, I think is important, so.
Social media is a very important way to keep in contact with people nowadays, I would strongly encourage, you know, in a control, in a sensible way that I know you would, but for the town government to communicate more and more through social media, because there's a dialogue going on of hundreds of people in the community every single day, and I definitely don't want you to be out of it, or the town government to be out of it, because you'll, you'll miss the real, it's the new age we live in.
And, and people need to monitor it and watch it, I mean, we've been talking, we've, you know, these are ongoing conversations, I started that, so.
I'm glad to see you're doing it, it's good.
Yeah.
When you get on Facebook, I'm looking forward to you friending me.
We will set up a ten minute.
Beyond our already friends.
Exactly, exactly.
And they'd be open to everybody, right?
Exactly.
Oh, yeah, so.
Um, so, so this is, um, so again, I think we had a very successful town meeting, I think there's a lot of work still to be done, obviously, to prepare uh, for FY sixteen, we closed that, we made a lot of progress on closing, moving forward in FY fifteen. We'll, obviously, we'll do another update, um, probably in, 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 in the next time there were full meeting, we'll talk about where we are through April on the budget, uh, and see where we're, we're heading for year end, so.
Great.
Good.
Um, so I want to just have a, a, a brief discussion, um, and see what the will of the board is in terms of ge- getting through the, um, appointment process, um, I'm gonna note some of the information that we got in our packets from the town clerk about, um, terms that are expiring. Um, I think at this point, we, we've been actually getting on a r- fairly regular basis some applications for various, um, positions in town, which is terrific. Um, so we need to come up with a plan for, you know, going through those and how to go through those, and, um, and then the usual end of the fiscal year turnover on, on boards. Um, so, I'm gonna just read out loud, um, that we have, um, well, do you know that people are not? No, and I was gonna say, so, would, wouldn't the first step be to send out an email to the chair of each committee or to each individual here?
Each individual, I assume.
If we had, we might not have, well, and, and set a date for them to respond by an early date
I agree.
to find out who is going to reapply and who, and it must be, it, 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 it can't be, you know, if we don't hear from you, we'll assume you're, you're, you know, it has, you have to reply to us yes or no, by, by a certain date, then we'll know, um, unless, unless there's a will to replace people,
Who's?
Um, then we'll know exactly how many openings there are and where they, where they are, and some of them are Troyka appointments, which have nothing to do with us.
Well, they do the chair.
Well, with the chair, but.
With the chair, but that likely will.
That person's us.
Will be different, right?
Right.
So, that's one of us, right? But, you know, one, one of the things that's always bothered me is that the chair is there representing the board of selectmen, but the application, the, the board never discusses, all right, here are the applications for the alternative energy committee, w- what is the board's? I, I don't think capital budget does, I think capital, uh, advisory.
Well, it, I was, yeah, i- if, if the role of the chair is to represent the selectmen in that, then yeah, we do need to be, I didn't realize that.
Right.
Um, so, that's a discussion we need to clarify, because, but if it's part of the chair's prerogative, such as setting the agenda, because the agenda is prerogative, right?
Excuse me. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Then that doesn't need to, so we ought to figure what their role, because it may make a difference, because if they're in there in a representative capacity, which I didn't.
Yeah, I don't know that, yeah. Yeah, and I'm not saying that about Diane, I don't think it's ever been done.
No, and it doesn't go with anybody, it just, we're just looking at.
Yes, it, yes, it has, but, uh, we would, uh, bring, uh, the chair would bring it for the board to discuss. What we do is that we group them and those that are onto Concom, we give to the chair the Concom. They would do some legwork on some of these, and, uh, then, uh, find out what different people wanted. Then they'd come in with the members, and we would have the joint, we'd present to us their backgrounds and stuff, and we'd have a joint meeting and do the, uh, appointing.
That wouldn't be for Troyka though, those are, those are the.
No, no, not Troyka, Troyka, what we did for Troyka, we would, uh, tell, the chair would tell the board who we have and did they have other people they want to consider, and ask the board if you have candidates you'd like for the, the select, uh, chairman to vote for. It was very open that way, we got it that way. We knew, the rest of the board knew who the candidates were for Troyka before we all met.
The, the, the only.
This was years ago now, it was, it was very now, and it was very open, it was much more open, everybody knew who.
Right, yeah, and I would, I want to get. Yeah, the Troyka, Troyka meetings are obviously open meetings.
They're open meetings, yeah.
I, I do think this is something we should check with council on to, to get clarity for, that you're asking for, because I, I agree with that, and.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, we can do that, I, it may have evolved, I don't.
Right, the only thing would be, the only way the, the board of selectmen could discuss who they wanted to go forward, you know, who they would want their chair to, to recommend for a particular Troyka appointment.
Open session.
Mm-hmm, that's right, not the voting, yeah.
Would be an open session, and that just adds another layer of, because sometimes, especially some of the Troyka, um, positions are, you know, there's a couple of people going, it's, in that, that's the most awkward thing, is when you have five people and there's three spaces, you know? And, and, and that's something I do want to, I do want to discuss, so, um, yes, I think one of the most important things is for us to first reach out to current sitting members whose terms are expiring, who have the opportunity to, um, serve another term, and let them know that by a date certain, and we can discuss that here, um, that they should let us, they should reapply, fill out the application form, and let us know if they want to remain on the cable advisory committee, for example. The cable advisory committee and, uh, which is a selectman appointment, is, is one of those committees that is only for a year. So, uh, so anyway, so all of those individuals are, um, have to be, um, you know, either renewed or we would need new people.
So, if we s- we're halfway through the week and we'd have to allow for the emails to get out, would the twentieth be reasonable?
Yeah, for, it's, it's for their intent to, for their reapplication for the position.
Who's scratching his head?
No, no, I'm not scratching it for that, I'm, I'm, uh, scratching an itch.
Good mix.
Sometimes an itch is an itch.
That's right.
You have something, an itch is an itch, um, that's two weeks.
You want, I mean, we could go the week after, the end of, the end of May, but, but that doesn't give us a lot of time then to.
Right.
Solicit- solicit.
I mean, I don't, I don't know.
Well, you know, you're already, there's a perpetual solicitation, right? Anyone who's interested, period, is encouraged to, and you already have some, right?
Right. Yes.
And I even had some people approach me at town meeting about, you know, how do you do about this, and I explained how to do it and how to fill out the forms, and, um, and uh, there's also, um, I think there's still some, there's a couple of open seats now, I mean, this, this only reflects the people who are sitting in the seats.
Right.
There are seats that are un- currently unfilled, this does not reflect, uh, this list does not reflect, um, so, um.
But Carol, Carol can with that office she made up for me before.
Yes, yeah, yeah, she can, so, um, um, we should probably put up, um, we can most certainly put up a, uh, got an email to everybody, um.
It's, it's this time of year that, you know, we're actually looking at this, um, if they're interested, they should fly by.
Yeah.
And that they can do so by email, they'll, they'll get an email, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, and, um.
They, they have communications online.
Well, they could fill out online and submit it online.
Well, they.
And, and, and people are always, uh, uh, open, if people want to, you know, again, anyone who's watching, if you're interested in serving on a committee, uh, go to the, uh, go to the webpage, find the form, and if you have any questions, just call the office, and just, you can fill it out, and you can email it to us, so you can mail it to us or drop it by, uh, and it's a couple of pages, if you want to attach a resume, that's great. Uh, some kind of letter of, of introduction, that would be great, it's not required, but it's, it's a nice thing to do. Um, and then we'll have it in the, you know, and then we'll start to say, okay, well, what's available, what's open?
Right.
There's always, there's always some level of availability in committees.
And, and, um, it is, I think, if, for anybody that's listening, or, or for Amanda to cover, I think it's important, if people are interested in serving on a committee, um, that they're not already on, um, it, it's worth reaching out to the committee chairs just to, just to get an understanding of the commitment, and a lot of times they'll probably get in touch with one of us and say, hey, you know, I'm kind of interested in that, what, what does it entail, and to the best of our ability, we can answer that, but it, it really is good to, to reach out to the committee chair and just say, how often do you meet, what are you working on?
Now, all the committees have a pa- you go to the town webpage, you find the committee, you know, find contact information for all the chairman. Send, shoot them an email and say, hey, you know, it's, that's, it can be that simple, or if you know them, give them a call, or if you don't know them, give them a call. Um, or you can find out when their next meeting is, and by that, and I, as I explained at some of the town meeting, the minutes are up there. If you want to understand what they talk about, well, look at the minutes, and then you'll get some idea of how long the meetings run, you'll get some idea of how often they meet, and what the topics are that they cover, um, so.
And they can also visit.
Yes, of course, they can also attend the meeting.
Go to a meeting.
Um, so that's almost, I mean, that's up there all the time, so we try to stay as current as possible with that, so people can have an idea of what the, the topics are. Um, so, so it's up, th- this stuff's always up there, we can, we can move it to a more prominent place on the website, obviously.
Um, I s- I sent the board a link, um.
Yeah, I.
That, um, and I apologize it was late and wasn't time for the packet, but just something, one, one of the things I wrestle with is when, when you, when there are a number of people for a position, including people that have served on a board for a while, you know, um, and, and having them all come here before us and having, it, it's uncomfortable, frankly, to, you know, try to decide if you only have one position to fill, which three people you're gonna choose for a position, so one of the things that Link did, it was just another town, and they had a kind of a board of selectmen handbook, it was, you know, their process for reorganization, how, you know, some of their things they're expected to do, kind of their code of, code of, uh, conduct, et cetera, is in there, and one of the things was the, how, the process that they use to select committee members, and they, I'm not advocating for this, I just want to float the idea and see what you all think, um, is they, they get a subcommittee of two members of the board of selectmen that pretty much sit down with each of the candidates, that, so let's say there's, and I'm gonna try to pick a not controversial committee, um, you know, there's ten people that want to be on the historical commission, and there's two openings. And let's say there's one incumbent that wants to remain on the historical commission. So, you know, I think, I think the process should be similar for each, for each committee, A, and B, then what do you do? Would it behoove us to set a policy whereby, you know, two members of the board of selectmen will sit down with each of the, each of the ten, and then have a, um, conversation about, well, you know, this one's been on the committee, they've done great work, or this one's been on the committee and doesn't go to any meetings, and then present to the board a slate of candidates for all the various committees? I, I, I can see downsides to it, um, I can see upsides to it, I don't know if anybody has any opinions.
Just, just one view I have is, is I know that may, there's a smoothness to that operationally, but there's a principle though of, committees and boards are so important in the functioning of our town, that I really think it's always positive and benefit the more we can connect ourselves to them and be connected with them. Um, and it's v- it's very healthy for the town, there's been times in the past, our town and other towns, where committees can either feel a little lost and not connected enough to the board of selectmen, I, as well as sometimes it'll go off and they'll, things can get antagonistic if people get different views. So, this is, this isn't gonna solve the whole thing, but I do think that in the selection process, the interaction is worth our time to take, because when we bring people up and we're all talking to them, we're not only giving attention, and, and it's a good way to bring people and make a community type thing, we're also talking about what that board is doing, it educates us on what these boards are doing and can do, and vice versa, and so, I wouldn't want to lose that, because of the, the critical importance that committees and boards have on us, I want us to be as close as possible, so I know this is an area where it does take time, and some, and effort, so, but I, it's just a human area of the governance of our community that I think's worth it, so that's just a principle thing.
Yeah, and I wouldn't necessarily say that that would, we would have to not do that, but we just wouldn't necessarily entertain all six applicants and put a few ill at ease, I, but I, I want to do what makes the most sense.
I mean, I, it, it, it is, it is awkward, but I think that, I, I like Kevin, think that it's, it's important and it's for the, all the board, not just a subgroup of the board, to have hands-on and interaction with the candidates. Um, I think that maybe what we might want to do is look at the role of the liaisons, and have the liaisons working perhaps closer with the, the chairs, because the chairs know the composition of the committees and how the people interact with one another.
The chairs.
And, um, many times, both in the appointed and in elected, uh, committees, eh, the, the boards find the people that they feel will be the best
Fit.
fit for, for them. So, um, the only, the only thing with that is I think that, um, you know, ever, ever, ever since an unfortunate incident, there's a certain segment of the population that feels very disenfranchised from town government. And I hear very often, when I talk to people about applying or sitting on, um, a town board or committee, because, you know, I would say, you know, if, if you're gonna mouth off about it, do something about it, don't, I'm not gonna just listen to you.
Mm-hmm.
So if you're, you're really that upset, get involved and and change it. And very often what I hear back unfortunately, not from everybody, but enough that I find it very concerning, is I would never sit on a board or committee that has anything to do with the Board of Selectmen. So I think that that's a big hurdle that we need to overcome with a certain segment within our community.
Wow, no, I, I, you know, they're, I know exactly why they feel that way and I don't blame them. Um, I think this board over the past couple of years has evolved and I, you know, I would.
Well, I'm not saying that it was us that caused that, but I'm just that there's a feeling in the community that has not, that has festered and has not,
Right, absolutely.
the, the outreach has not been there to bring in people, to make them feel, if they don't belong to a certain socio-economic demographic, that they will not get appointed, um.
Yeah, I don't know that it's a socio-economic demographic as much as it is.
Well, I don't know how else to explain it politely.
Yeah. So, I don't know that that's, I think it's more, I I think it's just more that, you know, I mean, right, there, there has been a situation, we have made people feel uncomfortable and they've, in in one case, we, you know, pretty much chopped the heads off, um, entire committee, but, and that has taken a long time to kinda get over, but at the same time, they don't want and put themselves in that position, so I, you know, is there a better way to?
Well, that's all I'm saying is I think that we, you know, this, this really.
To let them know that.
It has more, more conversation, yeah.
Well, as I said in the past, the, I was used to liaisons, so I was, we'd have a liaison in a committee and then we'd tell the chair, you know, there's a vacancy, or you know there's a vacancy. Uh, find, uh look and see if we have had candidates apply
Mm-hmm.
and have them come to the meetings and see, and then if they still wanna be, uh, and then we'd have them here. So they had some idea what, what they would be doing, because, you know, all the committees look very good, but a lot, a lot of people don't know, but I, looking over the candidate request, the request, I find we're getting a real crap, it'd be very difficult, you know, for the people, I I I'm really impressed.
A lot of great people, yeah. Right.
The thing I find missing in the applications is why people want to be on the committee and what they feel they bring to the committee.
Isn't that a question?
Yeah, I don't think I can have that.
Yeah, what do you, what really?
Please list any additional information or comments that may help in matching your interests to the most appropriate board committee, such as civic experience, special interest hobbies, et cetera, et cetera.
So maybe we just, um, maybe we come right out and ask the question, you know, what, what do you think you could bring to this committee?
Yeah, and why, I I'm always very interested to know why somebody wants to sit on a specific committee, what,
Yeah.
you know, it may be something very different from their day job, but it's a personal interest and this is, this is what they, they would like to become involved in.
Right. Right.
Well, you have listed here, please list below any additional information or comments that may help in matching of your interests with the most appropriate board committee such as civic experience, special interest, uh hobbies, et cetera. And that gets at something, and I've noticed there's been.
It still, it still doesn't answer the question.
Well, I know what you're, you're saying, if you, you.
Yeah, it's like when you go for a job and go, why do you want the job?
Yeah, you want to. Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's always Lauren's question, always.
Yeah, but they, I'll say they wanna serve the town.
Yeah.
And I really think that's a very genuine.
Oh, it, oh, it is, it is, I'm.
Absolutely, right. Well, so maybe, I I would, I would not be opposed, and I think if we just came right out and had a direct question, you know, why do you wanna serve on this committee?
Why, yeah.
Although.
Although some people do choose multiple committees.
That's right, they want their, and they can just answer it, you know, I'm interested in serving, I, you know, like, whatever.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Well, it's just a thought, it's always.
Yeah, I think it's important thing.
For a warrant, I'll probably ask the question for anybody who's.
The other one that we have here is pretty much given a resume, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, but again, sometimes the, the individual's resume isn't specific to the, to the committee.
So why don't we, um, why don't we get it out there that we are, um, going to be in early gen, or throughout the month of June, um, because I don't wanna box us into any week or not, um, you know, we are gonna be beginning the process of making appointments, um, for the committees, and that the, the first step right now would be to, um, reach out to the people that are currently serving and get their applications in right away. Um, and then, um, get a full list from Carol, we have, I think she sent us.
Well, we, we have, we have the ones that are sitting, we, I mean, we have any vacancies, yeah, we can do that. And some of these, by the way, aren't committees, there's actually some of these props up that's not, you know.
Right, and then there's a couple of committees that I would like to bring in this month so that we can really have a conversation with them, Stormwater, um, Open Space and Rec, and Cohasset Housing Trust.
Right.
We can talk to them and, and I think a lot of, I think what they need is some.
I don't know that anybody is still, I mean, there are no active members on the Housing Trust. I don't believe.
What do I do with my, I like my, my town report, um, does anybody have my town reports, Andy?
Just one report.
Okay, I'll get it later, um, anyway, yes, if there's nobody on there, then we need to have that conversation, um, you know, we need to fill this committee in their charges, I mean, I think one of the things, um, you know, I hate to single out committees 'cause everybody works really hard, but, you know, Alternative Energy, they were very focused, they had, and they had a mission. They had a goal, they had things they needed to accomplish, and that's why they were able to get three articles in and, you know, do a masterful job in addition to the town.
Well, you know, I, I was in a meeting last week, um, on, um, the Mass Managers Association, that's periodic meetings, we had one on DBW issues. And it was, so there was, there was conversations about snow and snow ops, which was great, and I had Brian Joyce join, join me, it was, um, part of the conversation was actually about Stormwater, and one of the things that they, I mean, and and the president, the presenter happened to be in a bigger community that, that, which is developing, and they, they had done a number of projects, but one of the things that they had sought out very aggressively was grants. Now, one of the things the Alternative Energy Committee had, had committed itself to as a, as a task this past year was saying, uh, we really wanna become a green community, so that became a big push for them, and it was great, because quite frankly, the work had to come from the citizens, I mean, it would not be something that my staff or I could have imposed, that's not how it would have worked, it wouldn't have worked. And it was very successful, so for example, a Stormwater community could commit itself to saying, okay, we wanna find grant money to do a particular project or projects, I mean, so, I mean, committees can adopt, I mean, obviously working with staff, we don't want people to go rogue and and go into something that's not gonna fit or work. Uh, but I'm, there are, you know, it's probably, in some committees, by the way, advisory, capital budget, they have ongoing tasks. Conservation Commission has very s- s- some responsibility.
Right, right.
The, the, the history on the Stormwater is that when the Stormwater bylaw was passed, it was really quite controversial and there was a lot of discussion. Um, Conservation agreed to take the regulatory portion of it, but there were things like filling out the NFTs and having a, you know, a yearly, um, uh, public forum for people to come in and talk about perhaps. And at the time, there were, it's not that those Stormwater issues have gone away, but the weather hasn't exacerbated them, so they've been lessened.
But the federal regs are, are about to increase radically.
Radically, right, so, I, I, I really think that it would be worthwhile to, um, look at, I mean, I still get newsletters, occasionally I, I forward them on to Brian, I've given them to the chair of the, um, Stormwater Committee because there's a number of different national organizations out there that have like webinars and, um, different opportunities, and I think that we could, uh, better craft what it is that the Stormwater Committee can and should be doing, um.
That's what you're talking about, isn't it, Diane, is, is getting a little tighter mission statement.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Cause right now, I, they're not doing the NFTs, right?
No, 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 that's done, that's done by a consultant, I mean, uh, although, I mean, I mean, there, there's, there's a degree of stuff that can't be done. There were, there was, there was reporting that can't be done by citizen committees.
Right, but that was, I mean, it was, it was really just, the Stormwater Committee became the catch-all for whatever conservation didn't wanna do.
But, but there are, I mean, I would just turn that as an example, I mean, you know, there, there, they were, and again, one of the things about that, they were talking about was rain gardens, by the way. I mean, and I mean, by the way, different, different styles of them, but, but they, um, you know, so, so there's, I wasn't doing that to start a long conversation about Stormwater, uh, but, but I, it would be the ex- right, but, but the, but the example is,
But this is a conversation we need to have on our.
Well, it, it is.
Uh, and again, it's the same thing with, um, with the Housing Trust, I mean, there, there's, there's, um, if the town wants to get it going again, it needs to have a very specific focus about where it can devote its energies, that way, by the way, another thing people don't, people will serve, and I think this is true anywhere, where, any organization I've ever been part of, if they feel like there's a goal,
That's right.
people just don't wanna attend meetings, believe me, I've attended, all of us have attended our lives, if we are active in any way, more meetings than we ever wanna count.
Right.
And if you just show up just to go to a meeting, you know, by the way, some people are masochistic and we like them to attend meetings for their own sake, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but, but, no, it's one of our jobs, right? Uh, but, but most people, if they're gonna give a volunteer time, they want to know they're doing something specific with a goal. And I think that it's, it's very important to have, and by the way, it has to be, it has to, it can be very specific and focused, and it can change, I mean, you know, and, um, and again, different committees have different roles, advisors are a very different committee, it's designed in a different way. But I think, I think it's, that is, it is very important to, to look at that periodically, so people feel like they're va- they're bringing value to the committee and.
Right. The committees that are full, that are full and are meeting on a regular basis are the committees that have a very specific focus and charge. And for the committees that are Board of Selectmen-appointed committees, it's our responsibility to give them that charge so that, so that they have something to do, and they wanna meet.
It's also fair to say, from time to time, whether or not that committee needs to meet right now.
Exactly.
Maybe it needs to be hiatus for a while, maybe something else, I mean, OPEV wasn't an issue, now it is, I sincerely hope that within the next
Absolutely. At some point, we may not need that.
twelve to eighteen months, it'll fade away and we'll move on to something else, and those folks can.
There's no, I have no Stormwater Committee on my list.
It's a, it's a, I, I, yeah, it's, I, I don't.
Since we were discussing.
These are the, these are the, well, I think it's because Martha, this, these are the, this list is of the people that expire this year.
These are the ones that.
Stormwater only has a couple of members right now, and I think they were all.
Expiration. Okay. So you have, you have a different list then.
That's on another list, this.
They have three members.
It's on, it's on the total list, yeah.
Yeah, there's just expiring.
Yeah, they're just expiring.
Yeah, it says expire, but I would assume one doesn't want expired.
I mean, we need to, Carol did run it off for me, and it was a, a full list with all the, um, all the physicians, when they expired, and any empty physicians.
Well, I, I would think they'd be expiring once every year.
Except that.
It doesn't always work like that, I wish it did, Martha.
Well, I, I, I understand with the alternate, you can've done it that way, because then it gives people,
Yeah.
if you have them all at once, maybe you have a group that don't know anything.
Well, last summer and fall.
And that's the reason you should stagger it, and that's why the advisory board was set up that way, and I, I think.
We're, we're, we're basically there, Martha, and Carol spent hours and has a program where, so there is another list that does that. I think the only reason Stormwater doesn't have an expiration is because they literally only had one or two committee members who were in their second year, let's say, for, you know, this year, so no one's up, and then we just made a new appointment, so they would be staggered.
Yeah. Well, I think, I think we ought as, uh, for committees have a, the same staggered, uh, appointment that some have and some don't, I mean, ha- having it all these different ways isn't very.
And some of that is by law, and you have to change it by law.
Well, that may well be.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, by the way, this is.
Oh, I didn't mention Economic Development, but that is the other committee that, that we need to have a conversation about immediately.
Yeah, right, and then I, I picked up on Chris saying that MAPC had helped situate.
Yes.
Um, I do think, I mean, I, I, I cannot say enough, i- in my previous term was when the Alternative Energy Committee was formed, and I was liaison, and although I'm an environmentalist, I will say I approached my first meeting with some trepidation, thinking, these people are gonna be too green for me, and they practically knocked me off the floor with their professionalism and taking environmental issues on a financial basis and a payback, they, they never looked, and it hasn't changed. But I think part of the reason the committee is successful is because they have some members, all the committee members work very, very hard and they work very well together, but they have some commander, comm- committee members who bring some professional expertise and knowledge and help to form a path, and it makes, makes, and that's why I think we ought to talk about what kind of people should be on EDC because it's a critical, critical of, of.
Yeah, yeah, but on the EDC, because of the criticalness of it, what I, I think we need to do is, we don't have a committee there at all, so we, we.
We have two, two members, we have two.
Yeah, we need.
We have still midterm, yes, there's two people whose terms haven't expired on Economic Development, it's, uh, Harry Hines and Ted Carr.
Mm-hmm. Uh, who's on the one. Harry Hines.
And his tar, his term, I think, has one more year on it.
No, both of them, it looks like, I just looked.
Expired this year?
Yeah.
Oh, so they're on this list.
So, what I was getting to was, what I'd like to do is, is, uh, for us to develop the, uh, state, the, the mission for that, the, the guy.
Yes.
Take, we know, so we need to bring this, not into our control, but we need to get this under our, so that we know what's going on.
Yes.
Are they TOICA appointments?
No.
It must be TOICA, they're not in this.
I think so, that's on TOICA.
And then, then I think we should put out the, the.
Of course, I'm, I'm on Carol's, I was saying, yeah.
Oh, good, thank you.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Okay.
And Carol was, this is.
Absolutely, that's why we need to.
So, we, anyways, we do, redo the recharge and then put out, and then seek members, and then whoever the liaison is, go, and meet with them,
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
help them get them formed and then have some, cause that's, we're missing here.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I agree with, with Chris in, in having them be very project goal-oriented and not let them.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Try to redevelop the entire town.
It'd be better for everybody, so that we're talking and dialoguing, it's a critical thing.
Yeah, yeah, and they got places and then they, they didn't, so, and I want, I would love the value of the two members who are on the board right now, I, I want them part of the conversation, but ultimately, we do need to give them a very specific focus.
And they could use as background material what people in the town did in the earlier master plans and so forth, because it was, particularly in the nineteen sixties, there was terrific for, uh, in, to, industrial development.
In this.
The other thing, um, well, just as only as a global thing that we're not gonna talk about, indeed, yeah, but the budget planning group, do we wanna do anything with that in terms of revitalizing it or anything, uh?
I don't think so. I think Chris's, and with, with the group, I think Chris's, there may have been a void at that point, but I, I think we got with using an advisory board and the capital budget and a couple of people that Chris won, I think we were very successful. I, I think it's a little redundant.
Let's, let's, let's cue that conversation after the, for the four committees, I, I personally, I mean, you know, I, I think it
Cue whatever's a conversation, it's all good.
functioned really well and it really is something that can help the town manager more than anything, so I think it's something that.
We, we started in a different path this fall purposely, right?
Yes, right.
And I think, I think the sessions were valuable, I think they had, I think there were people who came, there were some good conversations. Um, that said, I, you know, we evolve, right, there's a perpetual reassessment and say, well, what will work better? So I'm absolutely open to, to looking at alternatives, I, 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 I don't wanna go back to the past just for its own sake.
Oh, definitely.
But I do think that, Kevin, that, that continued evolvement of process is good.
Yeah, oh, like, for example, when we do it here, I mean, we don't wanna go too far, but I mean, it, possibly a formulation would be is, is where the town manager chairs it, or maybe the town manager and superintendent of schools co-chair it, and then we had, and it's a basis for a broad conversation in the community, so, uh, I definitely do think we need to have that kinda connection with the, us and the town manager.
I thought, I thought the four, I thought the sessions we had this fall were productive.
Oh, you mean the ones where we, yeah, no, I thought that was very good, I'm not sure that's, that's gonna be a substitute for a budget planning group for all that it can do, but again, I would emphasize that's to be, I visualize, personally think it'd be something that should be chaired by yourself and, and this is.
Let me, let me say this, because I was there when the budget planning group was, was formed, and it was formed because the then town manager thought that that would be the, the course that he would like to take to have communication and, um, interchange between all the different parties. I think that because of, of, of circumstances, it really, as Martha said, filled a void, but that void isn't there anymore. And Chris has set forward a process, which I was very impressed with, and I think that there was, um, all of that was happening outside of a formal committee, and I am, I'm loathe to get, go down a road where we usurp the authority the Town Manager's Act gives to the town manager for the budget.
Oh, definitely, yeah, 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 only thing.
And, um, I, I have a lot of problems with that.
No, that's fine, just a thing on that, cause I don't wanna go too far, because, uh, how do I, um, I brought it up, is only from hearings of it, I think some people think that committee still exists in some form, and, I know, and, and, so I think we need to probably have that discussion in a few weeks, you know, and.
I thought we had it.
Well, I don't know, I, all I'm saying is some citizens think that that sort of kind of exists still, so, I just think we ought to be clear, are we gonna have a budget planning group, is it gonna have a different form, because you, I think there's people, I, I heard at one, well, I don't wanna say, I think some people think it's kind of alive, so.
Well, I, I mean, look, I, 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 no, 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 I understand, I.
Just make it clear.
It is, it is alive in a different format, Chris.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna see the budget planning group being called, wait, wait, you wouldn't wanna see it called, a meeting called, and you don't know what it is, that's what I'm saying.
So I heard, I heard this the other day, that it was a committee that was set up that hasn't been properly sunsetted, I think that's where you're going with it.
Well, except, except the truth is, it was, it, it was never really created, I mean, and, 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 and there was a big conversation a year ago at town meeting,
You forget the sunset.
It was set, it was.
And, and there was an article that included it, and it, and it went down to defeat.
To create it. Right, right.
So, 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 I mean, so, now, so I, I went on a different path this fall purposely.
Yes.
However, as I said, I am absolutely willing to continue to evolve. However, as I said, I am absolutely willing to continue to evolve process. Now, I, I would, I would have liked to have seen other people in those rooms, to be honest. It would have been good for the conversation.
Right. Right, a lot of time it was all of us, usually committee members and.
And by the way.
But, 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 but let me say this, it's, it's not that they weren't invited.
But, but, but. No, no, of course, and, and.
So if, if these people who feel the need for that don't show up at the meetings, who have they got to blame but themselves?
I, I, but I'm always willing to listen and talk, right, and so, so that's, and by the way, that's, we should be always open to that, right?
Let's have a conversation.
Right.
Uh, I think we had a success, I think, I think the fact that the budget was unanimously approved by every committee.
With no any questions.
And then it went through a town meeting without a question, much less you know it was approval.
Yeah. I think we did some, I think we did something right.
I guess, yeah.
Let's figure it out.
So, so I'm also, I'm also loathe to, to fix something that's unbroken, right?
Yeah, yeah.
But I do wanna continue to evolve the conversation. We are pushing out more information than we ever have to the public on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
And by the way, we're not done. We, we need to continue to do that, so I, I, I'm, so we'll continue, but I, I don't wanna.
I agree, it's not, lives, the leadership on this needs to live, you come from there too, I would agree with that.
Right, so, so I, I, I wanna, um, I, so I'm gonna put up, uh, we're gonna, I'll talk with Tracy tomorrow and we'll try to get an email or some other conversation out to every member on the list saying, do you wanna stay? Who can stay, some people are term limited. And, um, there's at least one person on this list who's term limited and, um.
Yes.
Uh, they're, they're, um, and we'll also, uh, move the stuff up the, up the list, uh, up the front page so people can see the prom- that it's prominent. And again, I just, this is not perfect, but if you remember a year ago, this didn't exist.
Correct.
So we have software.
I think.
And again, this is one of those little things that makes life so much easier. Carol's in a huge, much better place.
Huge. She worked extremely hard. I know Diane worked with her and it's a fabulous tool to, just for her to be able to go in and hit a button and come out with a report.
Very heavy.
A little. And it took a lot of time to get it up running.
We were lost in paper at this time, I should say.
And, and she has, for the first time, you know, with Mr., uh, is it Steinmetz?
John, yep.
Yes, was appointed.
Immediately.
Uh, so, so the paperwork got, got generated, I signed it, he got sworn in. It was simple. Like, I mean, last year, there would have been a bit of a scramble about what here, this.
Yeah, Pussy got up and contributed to the town meeting.
Exactly. Which may, which may have been a first.
So, so on this, um, just a couple of things. One is, I, I, I do think we should reach out to all the people who, whose terms expire. As opposed to the committee chairs.
Yeah, you know, go do that.
You can see, see the committee chairs.
Right, right, right. I was gonna say, are you interested in continuing?
Just because if, you know, if the committee chair doesn't get, whatever.
No, 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 we're gonna, I'm sorry, if I didn't say that clearly.
No, no, I'm not correcting you.
No, I thought I was.
We're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna reach out to all the members who returns are expiring and say, hi, if you're not term limited and you know who those, those people are, are you interested in continuing?
Right. Right. Yes.
The second thing we'll do is we'll move the, the information a little more prominently on the front page of the website, so people know about it. And of course, we have a man here to talk about, if you're interested in a committee, jump right in.
I already tweeted it.
Yeah, we know, she's already tweeting it, she's already stuck behind us.
Social media.
That's exactly right, see?
I told you.
Kevin knows he follows me on everything.
That's right, I do.
And the, uh, just the, the other thing is, um, in any emails, it's, it's, and probably to the chairs, um, we should also send it to the chairs. And then all of these emails, take the opportunity to remind people that they, they do have to do their, um, ethics test online.
Yeah, well, you're gonna.
The other thing I wanna get really make sure is, you know, another thing.
You're right. Oh, that it needs to currently be done, that's right, yeah, that's right.
Needs to be done now, yeah.
By the way, you know, it's just, even if you're not, I did it anyway, okay, it was just easier, so it's just why I'm in the same cycle as everybody else.
Yeah.
It takes half an hour, forty-five minutes at most, if you listen to every single word of it, which is, I'm, it's most certainly encouraging you to do.
They have to give the wrong answer, they te- tell you eventually.
Yes, so, and remember, it's a training exercise. It's not, they're not trying, it's not a gotcha game, it's.
Yeah.
Yes, it's not a test.
I did it also and you really learn things from it, so my certificate is in.
Yeah.
Yes, and make sure, by the way, if you have, if you've gotten, just make sure Carol holds it on file, it has to be clerked for filing, so I would encourage, we encourage everyone to do that. It's, it's a very good.
It's okay.
Hmm. So the, the other thing I don't wanna lose sight of is the, um, handbook that Carol worked so hard on and make sure that that is distributed or has been distributed to. Did we get a final copy?
Yeah.
I believe so.
It's on the web, isn't it, isn't that, isn't that up there?
I, 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 I.
I have a handbook, I have a copy.
Do you wanna have that?
No, 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 that's okay, I, that's fine, don't keep it.
Cause I. I think they have extras from whatever the, the, the day we did the, right, okay.
Yeah.
All right, if, um, we'll make sure that those get out to the committees.
Okay, just one quick thing to do is, uh.
We can, uh, we can, if we haven't already done this, I can email it to everybody.
Maybe you can. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so.
It does have to be.
I think we can start a little committee.
Do we have a, do we have a folder somewhere where we're all, cause we have applications of people coming in for committees and I know where they just said, is there a set folder somewhere?
I don't know, it's a total two minutes.
Yes.
Cause at some point, I, I wanna get a copy of that.
I don't, yes. Absolutely. Tracy. I, I give them to as they come in.
She can.
Oh, yeah, I get them as they come in, I just wanted, if they're in one spot.
But she's the Kia, but I'm out of folder. Yep.
Uh, I don't wanna burden you too much, but I'd like to, well, in this process, get a copy of everyone, all the applications.
But you, but you have them.
Well, I have them each.
Well, can you get them electronically?